As we're recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, we have a wonderful member of the Latino community speaking to us today, Kanek Aguirre, Councilman of the City of Alexandria. Kanek was first elected in 2018 and is serving his second three-year term on the city council through 2024. He's the first Latino elected to the Alexandria City Council. Born and reared in Los Angeles, Kanek is the son of Mexican immigrants who instilled in him the importance of hard work, education, and giving back to the community. He is committed to increasing housing opportunities throughout the city, investing in our public schools and infrastructure, eliminating health inequalities to foster healthy outcomes, and ensuring the voices and concerns of all residents are at the table during the decision-making processes. Prior to his election to city council, Kanek served in leadership roles on numerous boards and commissions. Kanek spent three years in Alexandria City Public Schools, creating welcoming spaces and connecting students and families with resources to succeed inside and outside the classroom. He co-founded a parent group for Spanish-speaking families at George Washington Middle School and helped launch a citywide family and community engagement program. As a community advocate, he has fought to increase affordable housing in the city, improve equity in our schools, and build coalitions to promote government transparency and accountability. Kanek has a track record of bringing people together to improve the lives of Alexandrians. In his professional capacity, he works with underserved communities throughout Northern Virginia to increase access to care and improve health outcomes. I present to you and welcome Congressman Kanek Aguirre.
Good afternoon, everyone. And I got a promotion from Councilman to Congressman. I appreciate that one, Sterling. Exactly, exactly. Well, the nice thing for today as well is that typically we're only given, you know, 60 seconds or three minutes to be able to speak or answer questions. So this time, I won't feel like I'm rambling because we actually have some time to have a question. I'm going to talk a little bit about myself, just so you guys have a little bit more background and understanding of where I come from. And then I'll go into kind of what's been going on in Alexandria and then a little bit about Hispanic Heritage Month. So as was mentioned, I'm originally from Los Angeles. So good to see some folks from LA. Happy to have you guys over here on the East Coast. So both my parents immigrated from Mexico, from Puebla. So if you've heard of the, I'm pretty sure everybody's heard of Cinco de Mayo. That's where the battle was fought. I actually grew up playing in the forts where the battle was actually fought because our home is at the bottom of the hill in a historic district. And I'll come back to the historic district later. But, you know, growing up, LA, if you don't have a car, it's kind of hard to get around. You're either walking or taking the bus. So I always had a pocket full of change to make sure that I could hop on the Dash bus, which was the local bus. We also had the Metro bus, which was more intercity, if you will, whereas the Dash bus was neighborhood routes. And, you know, transportation has always been something that's been very important to me. And it kept on showing up in my life as I grew and even to this day. I never thought I was going to leave Los Angeles, much less California, but I found myself on a plane crossing my fingers to the great state of North Carolina, where I attended the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. Go Heels. I'm not going to lie, I had a little bit of a hard time there. Almost dropped out a couple of times. I was lucky to have a few people in my life that said, hey, you know, you're almost there. Just go ahead and get it done. And it was a difficult time because North Carolina is, was, and still to a certain extent is dealing with a black-white dynamic as much of the South has been for, you know, almost our entire history. And trying to show up, I remember we were doing a program for seventh and eighth graders to expose them to colleges and universities. And one of the students came up to me and they said, you know, I really like you. You're pretty cool. But, you know, I'm really, you're not, you're not white, but, and you're not black, but, and I don't really know what to do with you. So just to give you an example. But I had a great time. And, you know, I can't complain much because that's where I ended up meeting my wife. So she'll give me trouble if I said I didn't like being in North Carolina. After graduating, I went back to Los Angeles and I thought, hey, I'm going to start over. I was getting my footing, finding a couple of jobs, working as a SAT prep tutor and tutoring underserved kids throughout the city of Los Angeles. But unfortunately, we were, another statistic with the housing bubble. So in December 2008, we lost my childhood home. And I didn't really know what to do. So I decided to go back to North Carolina. People had jobs for when I graduated. And two years later, you know, the jobs clearly weren't there anymore. So I had to figure out what to do. And it was a pretty rough time. I was working about four jobs, 80 to 90 hours a week. I was working at a food line stocking groceries. I was working at a fast food burrito place. Of all ironies, I was working at a casual fine dining restaurant. And I was also working at the medical school as a clinical patient at Chapel Hill. And I didn't have a car, you know, so I relied on the bus system. When I was in school, the bus system was free. And again, when I came back, the bus system was free. And that made a big difference, right? Because, as you know, transportation costs money to be able to take it. And you have to log that into your budget. But luckily, the bus system was free and I was able to get around. And I was able to get it down to two jobs and only working about 70 to 80 hours a week. So I thought that was a bit successful. But my girlfriend at the time, now wife, she had some prospects up here in DC. And so I said, well, you know, this relationship's going to continue. And, you know, her opportunities are looking a little bit better than mine. Let's go see what happens up in the DC area. I found myself coming to the Port City, Alexandria, Virginia in 2011. And one of the things that I'm very proud of, and I know, I believe one of your mottos is, and I've been of service my entire time in Virginia. So when I got here in 2011, I started working in the school system, Alexandria City Public Schools. I started off as a bilingual parent liaison, which on the rung of hierarchy was pretty much down here. But, you know, I put together an event that I didn't think was very successful because I'd only gotten about 20 parents there and a couple of kids. And I, you know, went up to the principal afterwards and I was like, I'm really sorry. You know, I did all this work. You know, we spent this money on this event. And, you know, the turnout just wasn't. And he said, don't even apologize. This is the most parents we've had in five years. And so, taking that realization that I was on the right path, I was on the right track with the work that I was doing. And the work that I was doing at the school got noticed and I got promoted to help start the Family and Community Engagement Center, the FACE Center in Alexandria, which is now going 10 years strong, has won multiple awards for the City of Alexandria Public Schools. And across the entire city, nonprofits, city agencies, churches. It was a lot of fun. It was very fast-paced, working Monday through Thursday, 10 to 12 hours, and then coming back and trying to regroup over the weekend. The really, we did. And the funny thing is, I was knocking doors all across the city. So eventually, when I ended up running for office, one of the jokes I would make is, well, I've already knocked most of the doors in the city before I even ran. So, working at the FACE Center and working across the city, one of the events we put together was a back-to-school event. And I was in charge of the outreach as well as the bus routes that we created because, again, transportation, one of the biggest issues, we're trying to get people from place to place. And we were going to bus folks in from across the city to this event. I was trying to sound the alarm. I was like, we're a little overwhelmed. We've got 80 vendors. We've got a lot of people RSVPing. I think we're going to get a lot of folks here. It'll be okay. You'll be lucky if you get 100 people. So the day of the event, we got about 2,000. So some people saw it as a success. Some people saw it as a little bit of, you know, I'm to help with traffic and everything else. But like I said, I was trying to sound the alarm. And we had actually started engaging residents in a way that they hadn't been engaged before, right? And I'll never forget, one of the comments from one of the vendors and a longtime resident in Alexandria, and they stood there just kind of shouting. They were like, who are all these people? You know, where are they coming from? And it was the first time in a long time that we had had something like that in Alexandria. So very proud of that. And, yeah, yeah, gotta put in the work. And from that, one of the vendors actually ended up poaching me into the private sector. Very happy for Patricia Moreno, who's actually, I think, won like Westentonian of the Year back in early 2000s. I can't remember when, but if anybody knows Patty, she's force of nature out in Northern Virginia. And got plucked by the private sector specifically in Medicaid. So I was working for Medicare organizations for the State of Virginia Medicaid Plan. And I went from working one school, one community, to the entire city, to all of Northern Virginia. So I started working, basically my territory ran from Winchester down to Culpeper and Fuck Here. Yeah, it was a good-sized territory. It was a fun drive when I had to get out to some of the other places. And, you know, I started doing a lot of the same, engagement, right? Connecting resources with resources, people with resources, making sure they're aware what was going on. The easiest way to put it with what my position was, while I dealt with my Medicaid population directly and the members, I also had to deal with anyone and everyone that had an interaction with them. And with that also comes mixed-status families, right? Some folks will have citizenship and then maybe their parents don't, or vice versa. Maybe the parents have citizenship and the parents and the kids don't. So dealing with uninsured, underinsured, safety net providers, Medicare, Medicaid, dual-eligibles, the whole gamut. And I didn't realize it at the time, but this was slowly starting to form my platform for my run for office in 2018. But like I said, I was working in Medicaid. I was, again, working with just about anybody you could think of, chambers of commerce, local and state government, health departments, and Lions Clubs, Rotary Clubs in Northern Virginia. And, you know, there was a theme that I kept on seeing, both when I was working in the school system and when I was working in Medicaid. I kept on wondering why the policymakers at the school board level, at the council, city level, at the state level, I kept on thinking, why are these policies being passed? Do they not understand what the impact is on people's day-to-day lives? And so I was getting kind of frustrated. And I got invited to join a social justice nonprofit board, Tenants and Workers United, which was founded in Alexandria almost 40 years ago now, around tenants' and workers' rights. And it opened up an opportunity for me to start advocating around housing. Because, you know, I had my own story around housing, having lost our home, being housing insecure during college. I didn't mention that part, but I was definitely couch surfing a couple of times. One of the places that I selected to live, I had chosen because they had put in a brand-new carpet and it was very soft and I did not have a bed. So the soft carpet with the pillow I was able to buy made for a lovely home when I was there. And, you know, I was just, like I said, frustrated. And it comes up to, you know, do you want to just complain about something or do you want to do something about it? And so I went from starting to advocate and kind of being outside of the room to then having some influence inside of the room. Then ultimately, was thinking about, well, even if we could get to the individual that's going to make the decision, if they either don't agree with us, or they feel too much pressure from another group, and they won't necessarily have, I'll just say, sometimes it's hard not necessarily have the courage to be able to take a certain vote, then maybe I need to do it myself. So 2017 came around. I was with some advocates and friends, sitting around a table, just discussing who was deciding to run, who had already announced, who was something we could potentially back, who was someone who wasn't just going to show up for a photo op, right? Someone who could actually speak to the issues and understand what was going on within the community. And they pointed at me. They said, you should run. And I said, you who? And it started turning around. And I was like, what are you guys talking about? I was like, well, I mean, you know, the issues, you could talk about them. You've experienced them personally. And I said, oh, well, I don't know. I don't feel comfortable. I never really thought I'd get into politics. Coming from, you know, my family being in Mexico, politics was not looked upon nicely. And in a lot of Latin American countries and other countries around the world, you know, politics isn't, isn't very trusted, right? There's a large degree of corruption, graft, everything that you could think of. So, and I wonder, because my grandfather passed before I ran for office, and I always wondered what the conversation with him would have been like if I had have told him that I was running for office. But, you know, talked it over with my wife, talked it over with my parents. My parents were a little confused. All the, you know, I wouldn't say that we were politically active, but we were always kind of politically aware. So my parents always went to vote, but, you know, we were always kind of kept it at arm's length, if you will. And, yeah, I made the jump. And the platform was housing, education, and health. Housing because of my experience, plus the advocacy I had been doing both with tenants and workers and the Economic Opportunities Commission for the city. Education, because that was my day job. Well, I had worked in the school system. Plus, my mother had been a teacher in Los Angeles for 20 years in primary school. And health, because that was my day job. So housing, education, and health was my platform when I ran in 2018. I wanted to add transportation, because like I said, it's always been in my mind. My team vetoed that. They're like, no, 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 you're not on a committee. You haven't done it professionally, so you can't do transportation. So I said, okay, okay, fine. Fortunate enough that our message resonated with the residents of Alexandria. I got elected. I became the first Latino ever elected in the City of Alexandria at any position. Thank you. And, you know, I got to work. But one of the things that I gravitated to the most was transportation stuff. So I do hold a heavy transportation portfolio for the City of Alexandria. I'm on the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Capital Region, which is the Transportation Planning Board, TPB, as most people know it. I am also on the dashboard, our local bus system. I'm on the Womata Board as an alternate, representing Virginia. And I am also on the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, which I chaired two years ago. And, you know, one of the big things that we were able to do in Alexandria, which has made national news, and we are very proud of on multiple fronts, is going fare-free. And like I said, I remember not having a car in LA. I remember not having a car in North Carolina. When I first got to Virginia, I didn't have a car when I was working in the school system. So I'd take the bus to be able to get to work. And, you know, when the mayor proposed it, I said, let's do it. Because in 2019, I remember talking to staff at NVTC, and I said, ultimately, I would like to try and get our bus system to be fare-free. I just don't think we're in a position just now. When the pandemic hit, you know, everything changed. And it gave us an opportunity to go after this additionally with money from the state, from DRPT, which basically said, we're going to give you funding for four years. It's going to gradually come down and then we're going to stop funding. But you need to be able to put it in place. We'll give you the seed money. So we had the infrastructure in place, plus the commitment from the council. And the other big thing, and this is, you know, some people just want to go fare-free and think it's just going to magically work, right? But you have to take into consideration the routes that you're doing. Where are those routes going? Are they going to hubs? Are they going to population centers? And so that was very key when we redid our entire bus route system in Alexandria. And then the other component of that is, what is the frequency? So I was having a conversation with some folks out in Albuquerque. And you got to understand, right? Alexandria City is 15 square miles, 160,000 people. So we're dense and we're small, right? We're compact, packed in there. Albuquerque, almost 10 times our size in terms of landmass. And they said, you know, we went fare-free, but we're having trouble getting people on the bus. And so we started talking about it. And, well, how often do your buses run? Well, you know, 30 minutes and some of them run every 60 minutes. And if anybody here is catching the bus, you know very well that if you miss a bus, and it's running every 30 or 60 minutes, you're not getting to where you needed to go. And you're now calling a taxi, an Uber. You said, forget it, I'm going back home. And, you know, frequency is a very key component. And so we were trying to make sure that wherever we could, our routes were going to be running anywhere between 10 and 15 minutes. That way, if you miss a bus, you know, if you're waiting 10 minutes, it's not as big a deal, right? You're a little bit more willing to stand there and be like, okay, I know another bus is going to be coming pretty soon. So as soon as we implemented this, our ridership just went through the roof. We were one of the fastest to recover from COVID in the country, not just the region, in the country. We surpassed our pre-pandemic levels of ridership very, very quickly, within about a year and a half, I believe. Last year, we celebrated 4.3 million riders. This year, we're celebrating 5.3 million riders. Next year, we're hoping to get to six, you know, but it's a tall task for our desk, folks. But that's what we've charged them for, to get to 6 million. Yeah. If you guys are in Alexandria, please hop on the bus. Remember, it's free. It'll take you wherever you want. Yeah. So, you know, it's like I said, a lot of the stuff that I've gone through in my life helped to shape the lens in which I try and look at the policies that we create. I think about my own family, what we went through. I think about the families that I was helping in the school system. One more story about transportation. So when I helped start a family-parent group, which was essentially mirroring the PTA, but entirely in Spanish, and the conversations were entirely different as well, the themes that we would talk about, the biggest issue was getting people there. So I would actually drive out, pick up these families, drive them to the meeting, then drive them back home. Because we have to try and meet people where they are. And that is a mantra that I have definitely tried to live up to. One of the other things I've done while on council in Alexandria is changed the way that we do engagement overall. We only had a communications department of about four people. And that just wasn't cutting it. So I've almost tripled the size of our engagement team. We're meeting people where they are. We go out to lounges, we go out to bus stations, we go to grocery stores. We make sure that we're trying to get input from everybody. Everybody that has something that they want to say to us, we are willing to listen. We, of course, are engaging on social media, online newsletters, all of that. But we weren't really doing it in a way that I thought was appropriate or sufficient. And on top of that, the multilingual multimedia has been extremely important. And just a quick side note, because it gets a little bit difficult for me at times, because people say, oh, he speaks Spanish. And yes, we do have about 20% of our city speaks Spanish. And it is important to be able to communicate. But a lot of the things that I've tried to implement or have implemented have an impact for all communities, right? Because when we're doing multilingual multimedia, this helps with folks that have literacy barriers, even in English. This helps with folks that have disabilities. This helps with folks that speak other languages besides English or Spanish, whether it's Arabic, Amharic, Urdu, Pashto. So all of these things that I'm implementing help all Alexandrians. And that's something that I'm really proud of. And this showed during the census, because the census came in 2020 and I was the one in charge of it. I was the only Latino in the state of Virginia that was chair of a census committee. And I'm really proud to say that we had the best count in the entire region, in the National Capitol region. We had very extensive engagement. We were doing things in multiple languages. We were getting into print media. We were getting into radio. Couldn't do the TV. TV was a little bit out of our range, right? In terms of our budget. But we were just doing things that other places weren't doing and other folks were seeing it. And they were, you know, imitating, you know? They say imitation is the highest level of flattery, right? So I was flattered. And this was very important because I was also rebuilding some bridges with some of the communities in Alexandria who either hadn't been engaged with, or the bridges had kind of fallen apart. And that was especially critical, not just for the census, but because of the pandemic in 2020. So a lot of the things that I implemented in the City of Alexandria during the pandemic around using multilingual signs, right? Signs that would say this direction in English, in Spanish, in Arabic, in Amharic. Those things got copied across all of Northern Virginia. I would put up our response to the pandemic against anyone in the region. The only thing that I was upset about is how slow we were at times, especially with a region like this in the Capitol, where we have access to so many different languages, when we have access to so many different experts. And at times, I'm just, I was very frustrated because I feel that we could have acted a little bit faster. But again, a very noble effort from our staffs from across the region to be able to deal with the pandemic and trying to get information out as quickly as possible, trying to get people to get vaccinated if they so chose. And, you know, moving from the pandemic, it was, we found a lot of issues that we were having, right? It highlighted a lot of different inequities. One of them was small businesses. So a lot of the small businesses that we had in the city weren't being engaged. So when all of the funding was coming from the federal government, a lot of our businesses didn't get it because they just didn't know what was happening, right? Or they weren't prepared. So Councilman Chapman and I, we went to our economic development arm and we said, hey, we got to fix this. We have to make sure that we're engaging all our businesses in different languages, going out to see them, knocking on their doors. So when we had our own stimulus funding that we were giving to businesses, I personally went out and I can account for at least 40 businesses that received money from the city because I personally went there, knocked on their door, said, hey, have you heard about this? They said, no, I have no idea. I said, I want you to apply. If you have any issues, give me a call. So that's changed the way that we've been interacting with our businesses as well, especially our small minority and women-owned businesses. And that spurred also into our tourism arm. Because I said during the pandemic, we were highlighting a couple of our main neighborhoods, right? Who here's heard of Old Town Alexandria? Right? And so, Old Town was being highlighted, Delaware was being highlighted. And I said, guys, we've got other places in the city. We've got the West End, we've got Chililawa, we've got the Eisenhower Corridor. They said, oh, you're right, you know? Do you know any places? And I was like, I know any places? I love to eat. So I gave them a list of places. And so we were starting to highlight other businesses that we typically wouldn't highlight across the city. And on top of that, this has now turned into a campaign that Visit Alexandria, our tourism arm, is actively engaging with social media influencers, creating stories about the different neighborhoods. And so this is another way where we're creating economic development, awareness around our businesses, and support around there. So I'm really proud of those efforts that I've helped to develop in Alexandria. Housing. Housing has been a major issue in this region for a long time and nationally. I'm glad that the bell has finally kind of been rung around, hey, this is a crisis. And I'm proud that in Alexandria, we've had a lot of creative responses to this, national models. We created affordable housing over fire station, right? That's never been done before. We've been working with churches in their land to be able to create affordable housing there. We have an all-affordable housing project that's going into the Chililawa neighborhood, which is one of the most socio-economically depressed neighborhoods in our city. And it's going to be a little over 400 units, and they're all going to be affordable, from 80% of the median income down to about 40% of the area median income. And for those of you that may not be aware of what the area median income, it is very high in this region. Ours is in Alexandria is slightly lower than DC's. But for Alexandria, for a single individual, the area median income is about $95,000. And it's creeping up closer to 100. For a family of four, it's about $140,000, $145,000. So it's up there. And when you're talking about being housing burdened, a lot of folks are housing burdened in the region. And we're trying to do as much as we can around housing to sustain some of that. But we're not alone in that, right? Some of these issues, we can't tackle by ourselves. Housing, transportation, we really have to look at the region as a whole. Because we have to be working together. All of these things are interconnected. And going back to transportation, our highway system, our roads. Alexandria, we're a little bit of a victim of our location, right? Our proximity to DC. So we have folks coming from DC. We have folks coming through from Fairfax, from Maryland. So traffic is definitely something that we're all well aware of. Coming from Los Angeles, I am very well aware of as well. However, when I got here, I was like, wow, it's 95. That's a thing. So regionalism is very important to me. And hence, I do sit on several regional bodies, trying to figure out solutions to some of these issues, whether it's housing or transportation. How do we improve our public transit? How do we make sure that we have enough space on roadways? And then also, you know, recognizing that the majority of our infrastructure has been built around a car-centric ideology and being able to move cars as quickly as possible. But now we've returned to the idea of trying to be a little bit more local or also protecting our more vulnerable, more vulnerable street users such as bikers and pedestrians. And so seeing where we could try and find that balance between how do we keep bikers and pedestrians safe and able to move them from place to place, and also keeping our cars on the road and being able to move them quickly from place to place as well. So last thing I'll talk about for the region is, because it is Latino Heritage Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, from September 15th to October 15th. For those of you who don't know, the reason it's set up that way is because a lot of the Latin American countries gained independence starting on September 15th. There's about four or five countries. September 16th is Mexico, and then it goes all the way through to October 15th. One of the things that I really liked about coming to this region is that the Latino community specifically was in a critical mass point. It was a very big transition point. Doesn't have the centuries of history that the Southwest does. Doesn't have the, you know, eight-plus decades of history in New York and Florida. And here, you know, the Latino population started coming in, you know, the late 70s, early 80s, a lot of it from El Salvador because of the war, civil war that was going on. And we've gotten to a point now where we've hit that critical mass, like I said, where folks have graduated from high school, graduated from college, started businesses, have been running for office. And it's a very important point for the Latino community and here in the DMV to also just be recognized, right? Back in 1970, in Virginia, Latinos made up about 1% of the population. Now the Latinos make up about 11% of the state of Virginia population. Sorry, I don't have the stats for DC. Please come to Alexandria. We have the flags of all the Latin American countries flying. Please come to Alexandria. We have the flags of all the Latin American countries flying in Market Square. And at night, we have the city hall lit up in different colors for the different flags for their independence days. And yes, happy to take questions.
As a regionalist and as a transportation professional, let's talk about something that could help all of us. I'm a regionalist as well. Reciprocity. In the District of Columbia, we have, I don't know, thousands of drivers who have thousands of dollars of tickets against them. And most of those drivers have tags that are not in DC. We in the District of Columbia are powerless to gain the revenue from the people. But more importantly, in the vein, in the vein of safety that you wish to discuss and you've discussed relating to traffic accidents, bikers, pedestrians. Are you part of the vanguard of discussing reciprocity? And joining reciprocity with regionalism, perhaps we could help each other. Could you comment, please?
Yeah, no, I think reciprocity is very important. The, the issue is dealing with both Annapolis and Richmond, the general assemblies in both Maryland and Virginia. So it makes it a little bit more complicated, but we have definitely put it in our legislative packet to go down to Richmond and say, hey, we would like to have some more reciprocity. The problem becomes, what does it look like? And is it shared in DC? But yes, the short answer, yes.
Good afternoon. I really appreciated hearing both your story and the focus of your work. I am interested to know from you, what does health, I've, I've heard a lot about the social determinants and what you've been talking about. I'm curious, what, what does the work of health equity look like from a city council perspective?
Oh, that is a great question. It'd probably take me too long to answer, but in short, when I ran again, the two things that I was looking forward to working on the most were equity and trying to figure out our, our tax imbalance, but that's a different, different issue. Equity is embedded in everything that we try to do, specifically around health equity. You know, you have to understand the interactions between how does transportation affect it, education, work? You know, is, is the air quality in your home okay? We actually have a program right now that's checking air quality in homes and trying to help residents. Because if you can't go home and breathe easily, how are you supposed to concentrate to do homework? How are you supposed to feel good for the next day to go to work? So great question. Wish I had more time to answer more of that, but absolutely. Health equity, very, very big deal to me and look at it through a lens for everything that I'm trying to do across the city.
Single family zoning and school districting have long been instruments of maintaining social and racial and economic segregation. How does it affect you? What are you doing about it? And if you're doing something about it, what's the pushback?
So I'll take the, the school redistricting one first. So the, the city council doesn't control that. The school board does. However, we do try and make some pushes and our school system will actually be redistricting in the next year or so. So I'm looking forward to partaking in those conversations. Definitely have a huge imbalance. A lot of our schools on the west end, which typically have had less representation, are very overcrowded. And there is capacity in some of the other schools and we just haven't moved folks where we need to move them. So very much looking forward to that conversation in the year to come in Alexandria. So we will be discussing that. Zoning for housing is how we dealt with single family homes. So we have actually opened up single family zones, single family housing zones that we had in the city to being able to build up to fourplexes now. So we had an entire three year long process with a year long, very intense engagement process discussing not just the history behind a zoning and how it's been used, as you mentioned, but why we are trying to utilize certain tools within our toolbox to change what has happened. So we were successful in doing that. It was a unanimous vote in Alexandria. Was there pushback? Absolutely. People are scared to change. One of the emails that I received was, I'm not going to be able to let my kids play outside if you build a duplex next to me or a townhome. Which I, I mean, having an extra family next to you saying that you can't let your kids outside, I don't know. You know, other folks, I, I understand, you know, you just want to have a single family home. It's difference of opinion. And the other changes that we made to the zoning ordinances will actually help increase, increase affordable housing in other areas outside of single family zones. The single family zone is actually going to have the least amount of impact across the city because we're only expecting sixty to seventy new units across the entire single family zone over the next five years.
So this, our club has a tradition of presenting, planting a tree in the honor of our, of a speaker, our speaker. So there is a tree being planted in your honor, Congressman Aguirre. It will have GPS coordinates that you will be, have access to and you can go visit your tree wherever you want. So here's the, here's the certificate and the pin. Thank you so much.
Rotary Club of DC, thank you so much.